Hi, everybody at home. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Ready? We're recording. We're on. Okay, we're going to begin our business meeting. So if you're here witnessing, thank you for being here. And this first hour is our regular business meeting. We won't have comments for this because I'm hearing it will be in seven o'clock. So with that, it is 6:04. I will call to order the January 23, 2024, meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee. We are now in open session, beginning with my chairperson's report. I do have a few things to report since we last met, which wasn't that long ago because of the workshop. Last night, I presented to the Essex Board of Selectmen for their quarterly department head meeting. To my knowledge, Manchester doesn't have the equipment for this, but each board invites the chairperson to come do this. They have a new format, which is part of why I'm explaining this to you. Rather than just showing up and reporting whatever we report, they have some specifics. So they're asking us to report recent achievements, obstacles to current goals and objectives, expectations for the coming quarter, long-term goals on the horizon, concerns, and recent grants, and an explanation of whether the town needed additional costs when the grant expired, which does apply so much to this in the same way. So next quarter, I will send out an email when I get the reminder from them. And the board members will be welcome to populate a list of these, and then I'll use that list to create them and give to them. Last night, when I reported, you'll be able to watch online if you're interested. But the main topics, aside from some smaller things, were, of course, the EES was accepted into the MSBA eligibility period. We already know, but that night, last night before this meeting began, the Board of Selectmen had already voted when discussing the town meeting to put an article, to include an article seeking funding for the feasibility study. So that is moving forward on the Board of Selectmen front, which is great. For Essex, they don't have confirmation or anything about Manchester yet, but I'm sure we'll hear more about that. They're moving forward with that, which is wonderful. So we're saying thank them. Chairperson Farid did share openly that when we get, if we are invited to participate in a feasibility study this fall, that she would like, and the board supports, would like us to consider as part of that relocation, a new site for Essex Elementary School, would be property that they purchased at an Apple Street. It's on Apple Street. I explained that we'll take that, and of course, there will be lots of opportunity for that input before then. Right now, we're just doing the things as prescribed to us in the MSBA. It is one of us. It's too far ahead of ourselves. But it's good that we're moving forward with what sounds like support for an EES project from the Board of Selectmen in Essex. We also talked about the principal search, and I made sure that they knew about the feedback set, the community feedback session. Tomorrow, I sent along that input as well. We did talk about long-term budget approval, that, and it was reiterated that their ask is two and a half percent budget. I'm sure we'll talk about that tonight, but there was engagement about that discussion together. Let them know that we still have a professional contract underway. The Plan Two board with a learning exercise about apportionment comps guided by Mass Association regional schools. And as far as grants go, I did let them know about the arts and culture grants and just explain a little bit about that and what we're looking for. And then in the concerns area, just so you all are clear and aware, I did bring up very clear with my language to share this concern by way of invitation. That if we have received their feedback on multiple occasions that collaborate, that they're not interested in participating. What has been known as the collaboration for meetings unless they are meetings. While we respect that, it emphasized that this is an opportunity for relationship building, which someone else had mentioned earlier in the night. And I would invite them to reconsider and see that there is value in having reps from all these boards sitting at a table even publicly, so that also the public can see the kind of interaction that we're engaged in together. And so they didn't have meeting space to pre-discuss that or anything. But I just want you guys to know that I did accept that invitation. So we'll see what happens. That is it for that. Also, to let you know, Pam and I did meet with a member of the Manchester community, Anne Harrison, a member of the community, who has a proposal that she actually would like to report regarding advertising revenue. Which is a topic we're bringing up. I don't want to get into specifics of it tonight, but just so that you're aware, that will be in the agenda on February 6. And you can expect information to come in your package maybe. Discussion of that. All right, let's see. Oh, many of us, I think, were made aware that the two towns' finance committees are having a joint meeting tomorrow night. I think Pam has maybe a little more insight on what that is or what it isn't. The information I received said that it was potentially to discuss long-term strategies for putting the district together.
That's what I know at this point, is that I wasn't expected to go and present it.
Got it. Okay. So if any of us are interested in attending. And then as far as the community engagement work, I just wanted to give you a quick report back on that. Just a quick update over these items. The short-range engagement with the written communication, those two pieces, the piece that we had talked about with letters to the editor, like creating a couple of feature pieces. I had a thought about that, that if we did take them up, take the curriculum on two feature pieces, we can discuss what they are. What happens after we adopt a budget, the process, that sort of informative items. But part of the conversation had been that we don't have a place to put, like if we were to write up some different questions that come up frequently and stuff. That occurred to me when I received the district newsletter the other day. We actually do, we have a page, we have a school committee page on the district website. I didn't run this by anybody in advance, but if we wanted to utilize that space a little bit more effectively, I think. And so that's something for us to, some thought too, that we do have a landing spot for this that isn't Facebook, isn't, you know, a newspaper that needs to run a business and not just a road. So that's an option that we have for us. The meeting invitations for that mid-range personal interaction type engagement, I know that some people have been doing that. Hate suggestion today is talked about by the senior senator to make a personal interaction. As far as the listening sessions go, based on our conversation last couple of meetings, I thought maybe we could reconsider naming that just to call them engagement sessions. Community engagement sessions or something that I tend to do just in the beginning. But what I would like to propose, and again, all of this comes with the understanding that members who are not paid, it's not a good job. So I will only schedule things that I'm capable of being at and how I'm enjoying it. It's great. But that after we adopt the budget on February 6, it might be wise to have, to offer those weekly. And between then and the actual budget adoption or approval. Whether that's with groups that specifically want to host or in the off weeks where we don't have specific groups that would like to host, we could utilize. So that's just an item for proposing. Again, we don't have to decide that. And then as far as office hours before the meetings, I'm looking at the calendar and it goes quickly. I've got February 6, March 6, March 19, before the town meetings take place, as long as something else isn't scheduled. I'm worried with that. For now, we'll start there. And again, whoever can make it can make it, and if not, that's okay. The office hours right before a meeting, just open invitation for people to come and talk to us in a smaller group, rather than if they're not comfortable making a comment.
Did you say weekly? I thought you first said weekly engagement sessions. That was something different.
That's the going out, remember, the get out into the community, go out and meet with people. The office hours is just wherever we're meeting, showing up at, you know, 5:00 or 5:15 instead of 6:00.
Okay, thanks. I didn't understand.
And then that, that long-range engagement with the continuing to boost the MERC social media things. Again, thanks for anyone who's done that. And if we, you know, we can continue to do that as appropriate and as individuals feel like they are comfortable doing so. And if we do end up utilizing that, that school committee page, it might be possible that the district boosts some of those as well. So that's my report out on the community engagement plan. And then the final thing for my report is that we typically do the reading of the school committee operating protocols. But I received, I hope, I think you probably all received this as well, this handy dandy MASC, Mass Association of School Committees calendar 2024. And I took a minute to actually look through it, not just write things in it. And in the back, it has the MASC Code of Ethics, which I thought was really interesting. And I read somewhere else that sometimes committees read these into their meeting as well, and I thought that might be nice. It breaks down into four chunks, and we've got four meetings before the first town meeting. So I, it's chairperson's report. I get to choose to do that. So.
Would you be willing to read the first section?
I am. You sit next to me, you run the rest.
MASC Code of Ethics. Wait, are we starting? Do you want me to read the pre, like a preamble?
Yes, we'll only have to do that once. This is the section.
The acceptance of a Code of Ethics implies the understanding of the basic organization of school committees under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The oath of office of a school committee member binds the individual member to adherence to those state laws that apply to school committees, since school committees are agencies of the state. This Code of Ethics delineates three areas of responsibility of school committee members in addition to that implied above. One, community responsibility. Two, responsibility to school administration. Three, relationships to fellow school committees.
Thank you. And at each of the next three meetings, we'll cover one of them. There's a teaser.
Question about the outreach. Yeah. So what's the plan? Who is doing what? Or for example, the office hours and the engagement sessions.
Yep.
Are we gonna decide it out and who's doing what?
So the way we had left it before was that nobody really wants to be tied down to any of this was the understanding that I took from our conversations. And so I am going to schedule these things as far as like the office hours, just, I'm just gonna, we're gonna schedule them before that. I will be there, and any committee members who can be there are welcome to join. That's, that's the idea there. The, and if we end up with so many that we end up with a forum, we'll reevaluate who needs to be there on any given day. With the, the going out into the community engagement sessions. If there is a particular group that wants to host and has a specific connection to someone, feel free to set that up and then just be in touch. But I'm keeping it, I'm the keeper of the calendar on this, but not the keeper of the ability to do these things.
So you're recommending that we all reach out and try to schedule some of these?
I'm recommending, I'm simply recommending that if, if you want to do that, you are welcome to. If you don't, that's okay. So this, this all comes in a category of things not required of a school committee member. And so I'm hesitant to say we must do these things. But it's now public in an open, public meeting. Anyone who's paying attention can feel free to reach out to us. But if the opportunity comes up and you're having a conversation, feel free to offer it.
Some other boards are doing that. And I also recommend that we have a designated person to be kind of like that board liaison. You know how like the select boards, they have specific people that, that's kind of like the liaison with the school committee or the income and whatnot. I think it would be helpful for us to kind of have that person to know, you know, what's going on today.
I think that's a broader conversation than we can tackle tonight. I, I'm not comfortable getting into assigning liaisons in official capacities at this point tonight. It's not an agenda item, and we haven't come prepared to discuss that. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Teresa, on the regional agreement working with Mars.
Yep.
I think we call us making a decision about that.
That was, oh, go ahead.
So I just, I just want to clarify where we stand on that, because obviously, as a budget implication too, if we go down that route potentially.
So my understanding, and Pam, you can correct me on this, was when we discussed this at the Finance Subcommittee meeting, that we're interested in doing that. My understanding is that there's an initial piece to this that is budget neutral, that doesn't cost money. And then if we choose to engage further than that, then we would have a budget implication and have to decide that as a group. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I think we left it that I'm going to reach out to Mars once the dust settles a little bit on this.
I'm on my phone.
And set up a consult to see what they can offer us as an initial assessment and advice for going forward. And then kind of take it back here and see what a bigger partnership might look like. So I'm supposed to make a first.
Information gathering stage.
Yes. And none of this can start until some things do calm down a little bit. So it's in next quarter.
All right. Thank you, Teresa.
Okay, that's it for my report. Consent, we don't have students report tonight on the agenda, consent agenda. I will enter data motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes vouchers 1042 through 1044 and the minutes from 1:09:24. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So, any discussion? All in favor?
We've all triple-checked the voucher numbers.
Yes. Voucher numbers are correct. I have stated them correctly today. All right, subcommittee reports. We have no facilities subcommittee report tonight or finance, but I understand we have negotiations.
We do. Negotiations last met a week ago. Let's see. So that would make it the 16th. You're getting closer. Meeting next on February 1st.
I think we should try to schedule an executive session next week for updates.
Got it. Will you send out availability? And we will all commit to responding to Pam's request for availability quickly. Thank you. Okay, policy and program update.
I will report out with the caveat that we discussed a lot of things, so I'll ask Hannah and Jake to jump in if I miss something, which I probably will. So I'll go through these in order. We are continuing to discuss the utility of a class size policy. Sorry. Utility of a class, okay. Also, I can't do it. I can't hear myself twice. That's not gonna work. Okay. We're continuing to discuss the utility of a class size policy. And I think next steps in that area are for Pam to reach back out to Ms. Scroy and determine if we can get a budgetary assessment of what that would look like. It's really challenging to do, and I'll say a couple of words about it, because I think, to me, I didn't appreciate how challenging it was. Because you think about it on a very basic level, you just eliminate all the classes with less than 10 kids, and you see what that would look like. But that's not obviously sufficient, because all of those classes with, first of all, some of them can't be eliminated, because some of them have specific legal requirements. Those that could potentially be eliminated still require consideration of what happens to those many students who are no longer in that class, and how they impact all the other classes, and whether that means that those other classes therefore need additional sections. So it's, it's a bit of a waterfall consideration. And what, what we would love is to be able to run some sample schedules to see what this would look like. But sample scheduling is not as easy as it sounds either. And we're also sensitive to the fact that Ms. Scroy is in her, you know, first scheduling season. And the most important thing that we want her to do is approach that with the conscientiousness she needs, and then help us try to address this ongoing question, because it does remain on our radar, and it does remain something we want to be able to give you a more comprehensive understanding of. I'm gonna move on to reserves and let. Can I just remind anyone joining us online or by phone in particular, please mute yourself. If you're listening on your phone, please hit mute. We are continuing to work toward developing a reserve policy, again, harder than it sounds. The first thing we'd like to be able to do is report back to all of you on what we consider our reserves. And what we've discovered through this process is that there have been times in the history of the school committee that a variety of different revolving funds have been considered reserves. And whether that's appropriate or not, it's something that we're continuing to take under advisement. And we, we do, we plan to be able to reach a conclusion on that in the near term. We are waiting for some feedback from Pam in terms of where the reimbursement for turf fields will land, whether that will go back to school choice, or whether that ends up in stabilization, which will ultimately impact how we, how we think about and prepare for any specific policy. And of course, in connection with reserves, Pam is also working to prepare a list of imminent capital needs, which would include, among other things, a feasibility study that we've been talking about. So we do, we know that there are some significant upcoming demands with respect to reserves, and we want to make sure that we take that into consideration as we develop our policy.
Great. Yes. Okay.
Advertising and sponsorship. Teresa, I think you basically did my report out. And so far as we're aware, that a community member will be bringing a proposal to the school committee. And we are looking forward to hearing that information and moving forward. The thing we would like to be able to do as a subcommittee is, oh, no, that's, that's a different update. Sorry. Is listen to that information. Yes. Yeah. The one other thing I want to say is that we do have an advertising policy. So I just wanted to make clear if anybody didn't know that, that we have an advertising policy. And the question will be whether that needs further adjustment or alignment, depending on how we decide to proceed with this. The next item, the expanding policy and programming subcommittee's list, is participation in sports and extracurriculars for middle school, for middle school age students who do not attend the district. This is an issue that was brought to us by a community member. It's something we'd like to be able to consider further. And I think our next step is to meet with administration to understand some of the benefits, as well as the challenges with respect to allowing that type of participation. What we'd like to be able to bring back to you guys is a list of, okay, we'd like to get to yes, but we need to consider in getting to yes, the following challenges, that, you know, unintended consequences that we could confront. So that leads me to two easy ones. I think the MASC update, thank you very much, Jake. He took that on on the half committee and circulated it. And I think the next step is for.
Yeah, she's got a lot.
Pam got a lot of the next steps, please. Sorry. And then the graduation policy, we did vote on at the last meeting, so you guys know where that stands. Yes. Check. Anything else from my subcommittee members?
I would say the only thing to add is the advertisement one. At some point, we need to clarify what the community need to make a decision, if the revenue is gonna be pushing. It's gonna be additional revenue or to be offsetting the existing expense.
So that, that's part of the conversation that we'll have February 6 as a full committee. That's not a subcommittee part.
It would be great if you would hit mute. Bless the heart. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We asked for a comprehensive update and received a comprehensive update, and we appreciate this. So it sounds like there is movement on all of these. Do you think that by the end of the year, it's reasonable to tackle all of this? Do, I mean, what do you think is?
To be honest, the limiting factor here is, I'll put Pam on the spot, is Pam's capacity. I mean, it's, we're asking a lot of Pam, given the guy who has some, that position has some commentary to add to some of these.
Yep.
So it really will depend on how frequently you can meet. And on the class size, it'll really be dependent on strategy for kind of testing the implications.
Well, I think it's fair to leave that open-ended at this point, if that's the case. But it is helpful for us, I think, to all know where things stand with everything. Did you want to say something?
I was just gonna, how the budget season unfolds is gonna dictate how much room there is on the agenda given. So once we're into adoption and then just waiting, that should open up quite a bit of time. I hope. I think we just need to keep, be honest with one another about what's on the list and the feasibility of getting things done. But I'm hoping we can get through a good number of them by the end of the year.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay. Thank you for your reports. Superintendent report.
Sure. I just have a couple of quick things tonight. I'll throw up the, and I have a guest. So just two district-wide updates. First, the elementary, the Essex Elementary Principal Search is underway. We have a feedback session tomorrow for both parents and community, as well as faculty. And the parents and community session is a hybrid, so you're welcome to dial in. You just need to get to one of our websites and let us know that you're interested in a link, and we'll be sent out to you. So I know it's posted in our newsletter, which is on our Facebook page also, the website. But we're excited. The goal is to get that wrapped up by March and have an appointment and be preparing for the next year. So that is another thing on the, on the for pulse list, but we're excited about it. We should be sending out in, sending out, we've got lots of interest in participating on the committee. So we just need to solidify who's available and then create the formal committee, start the assessment of the applicants, and then begin the interview. So underway and exciting. One update has to do with a kind of a question about where are we going in next steps. And I don't think we need to answer this tonight, but maybe by the 6th. Desi has reached back out to us, as you know, when we're talking about reviews and audits and the various different things we might want to undertake next year. One of the contacts I made was through the Department of Ed to ask if we could participate, ask if it would be available to us to be put on a list to participate in a review that they do, which is fairly comprehensive. I had shared some different report outcomes from different regional schools. And they said, well, that's really interesting. We're gonna put you on the list in the beginning of the year. We're gonna start to formulate who's gonna get polled for next year. Some of it is, is a bit random, some of it is targeted, and they said it's emerging somewhat that people are requesting it, because it can be helpful. Long story short, the contact reached out to say, we're starting to formulate that list. We see that you are on deck for a tiered focus monitoring review next year, and you're participating in a NEAS accreditation review. Those are both hugely, a huge undertaking and very comprehensive. It's often because of the scope of that work, by statute, they can't pull our name for the review, recognizing how much goes into them. However, we could waive.
You're being over review.
We could waive it and ask we put on the list anyway and do them all at once. He said that they wouldn't, he wouldn't piggyback and come out at the same time to tier monitor, tier focus monitoring. Tier focus monitoring is the old, it's basically special education and title. Title nine, title one, it's all of our, a lot of our compliance in civil rights issues and also our special ed programming. So I think what I'm looking for is feedback, and again, not necessarily tonight, but going into February, is how should I advise him? Because I'm getting the sense that if we say we want a spot, we will be given a spot. And I don't want to say yes and then pull it back. So that's just something to consider. And then my other update is just, Heather might speak a little bit more to it. We've officially launched the Arts Council and the Wellness Committee. So it feels good to get those under the wing in the second half of the year. Left on the to-do list is the Library Task Force, which hasn't been forgotten. It's just got bumped down one notch over the past month. But I think you'll see that sometime February.
Great. Question about the input for the DESI review. So can we put that on for a short conversation on February 6 then?
Yeah.
Okay. So what do we need to know for this? Go ahead. Yeah.
Pam, can you just remind me what level NEAS, or we. Are we?
Elementary.
Elementary.
Both, schools together.
So one thing that would help me on that is is to know if you and your administration team have a recommendation about that. That will make a big difference. You don't need to answer that now, but just how you guys feel about this, yeah.
I can answer right now that we've discussed. We could do, we could probably take it on, but we can't take on three more things on top of it. So I think that's the question I'm asking.
Got it.
What's the probability that if we said yes to this, we're still going to get other things? Because we also have the feasibility study and MSBA, that's, so there's going to be a lot that's going to tie in together. So if this is still an important issue and this is a potential solution for it, now, now is when we would want to say yes, that we want to take advantage of it. If this isn't a potential solution for it and you think another one may be upon us by the fall, then we we might want to pass. So I think we're trying to craft a recommendation based on what the reality is in front of us.
All right, Jake, then Erica.
I would say I'm still a little confused about what problem we're trying to solve from the town side. So I think trying to clarify that first will help me.
I would agree with that and say to the extent that the DESI review is intended to answer a question from the town, then then we really need all partners at the table because it makes no sense at all to take away your time to answer a question that they're not actually asking or that that won't satisfy them. And that's my biggest concern is that the DESI review doesn't necessarily focus on the topics that they may be most interested in. So in keeping with that, would you mind recirculating, I know you already have, but the link to the page in the website that describes what the DESI review will actually answer? We can have that in mind for next meeting.
I can take that on, Pam, I can do that.
Good, thanks.
And then actually, once that's done, why don't I, I will outreach to our town partners as well, just to let them know that we're going to have this conversation. If they have input that they'd like to share with that, that would be an appropriate time for it. I don't want us to end up dealing with that as like a sole focus of tonight. But that's something we can take off line and continue, so we have that information for the sake. Anything else?
My only other piece is I wanted to ask Heather to give us a little bit of an update. This isn't necessarily a comprehensive update, but it's a few quick, what we're doing in the second part of the year to address some of the concerns identified in November assessment.
Committee, thanks for having me. So so just want to touch on a few pieces and then definitely have to give some further detail as needed. What I did was I actually looked back at some of the deliverable pieces that we mentioned earlier in the fall. These are some of the action steps that we want to take, so I want to just touch base on a few of them. These are not the only's that are underway, but some really good work happening with our educators and with our administrators in the building in the area of instruction and assessment and curriculum, all the good stuff. So we're working on curriculum mapping in different pockets. A big bucket of that has really been at across the elementary levels in the area of literacy. And our teachers are working really hard in horizontally. And that also gives us a chance to have that vertical snapshot. So that work is, is, we're really deep in it and it's letting us do some really, having some good conversations about our literacy instruction and practices. We're also doing work in a few different ways around action planning on attendance. And this is something that we can follow up with you again at a future meeting. But there's a working group at the high school that's going really deeply into attendance. And we've also received support from DESI for a chronic absenteeism recovery initiative. So that work is in process and when we're moving more towards that action step planning, we can share some of that work out. So we're in some of those beginning stages to address the attendance and absenteeism points that were raised earlier in the year. We are midway through our history social science curriculum review process. And part of that piece is that field testing of investigating history curriculum for which we received the grant from DESI. And that curriculum review process for that has really been, it was great. The last meeting we had was a K through 12. So it was, it was really neat to have folks cross, cross buildings and levels have a chance to connect and interact with each other, set that vision for what we're looking for. And we're starting to curate, what do we have and where do we need to go to meet what those curriculum frameworks identify? And Pam mentioned, we've also launched the Arts Council. So that was another opportunity that we received grant funding from DESI to implement their arts and culture vitality index, which is really a measure of how healthy are the arts and culture curriculum instruction and opportunities for students within our schools and our communities. So we have a wonderful group of community members and educators who've had a chance to start to connect together, to look at those tools and start that conversation about what does that look like for us in Manchester Essex and where do we stand? And so we'll actually have a deliverable for you by June that will give a measure of, at this point, at this moment in time, how healthy is our arts and culture opportunities in our district? So that work's exciting. Connected to the curriculum review, which I didn't list up here and Pam did mention, we did just send communication about restarting our wellness committee. So we are seeking community member involvement. And so there are opportunities for folks who this is an area of interest, passion and potentially their work outside of school to join us. So if you have an interest, email Pam. And collecting those names, it will be launching that, I know Pam's just, she she had so much free time that. But we'll be collecting those names and then that committee, our first meeting is scheduled to start in February. And again, that will be a partnership that has a balance of educators and community members to engage around that work.
And don't worry, it's not dependent on me.
And two other just quick pieces I want to highlight. We are in the middle of, well, middle to end of the window of our mid-year diagnostic assessment that we give in kindergarten through eighth grade in both mathematics and in reading with the iReady platform for kindergarten through eighth grade. So that's something that we're in the midst of completing that. And then what's coming soon after that is data meetings at the middle school. The administration is working to support their educators to have data chats with students to really think about where are we, what does that mean for us as learners and what does that support look like? And at the elementary level, our multi-tiered system, the support team is connecting with grade level teachers again with that horizontal connection across schools to dig into what does that instruction look like for all of that tier one? And then what are those specific needs for students that might require a more targeted intervention? Who needs it? What is that frequency and what are we going to do to support those needs? So that's, we're right in that window right now. And then that last piece that complements that is that I did share the last time I had a chance to give an update that we did receive the grant from DESI to provide high dosage tutoring, which is just, just launching and it's been, it started at middle and it's just launching here at Essex. We received the grant to launch in mathematics. I'm also currently waiting to hear back from DESI about, it's sort of pending if we can actually expand it outside of other content areas. And I'm working with our tutoring partners to see what availability would look like. And Pam and I are looking to see if there's an opportunity to use SR3 funds to support a bit of an expansion specifically here at Essex, targeting those key needs through that, based on the assessment data that we're utilizing. What would those targeted instructional needs look like? So that is, again, underway, there's a few things we're waiting a little bit on, just, just with some of the outside partners that we're working on. But that is also up and running.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you interested in questions?
I'm, I'm happy to.
Anyone have questions, committee members? Go ahead, Jake.
Paul, Heather, on the absenteeism.
Yes.
Given that you are talking to DESI about a chronic absenteeism recovery and absenteeism recovery initiative.
Yeah, that's DESI's language, they love it, yeah.
Suggests that you already have a sense of the issue, the underlying issue.
I think that's some of the work that's happening. And honestly, I'm not the best person to speak specifically about that side of it. The high, there's a high school working group that's been meeting since the fall around this specific issue. And some of the members actually from the high school attended. There was a conference with the commissioner and they were actually really launching and leading into that. So I think what the, this piece that we're starting to conversation around right now around the initiative is its cause and then what is sort of those action planning around it? And there's a few buckets you can lead into. And so we're just, we're just there on that threshold piece, so.
This is a K-12 thing, not just a high school thing, right?
So, so the high school working group is focused on high school needs, but the chronic absenteeism initiative has the opportunity to support K through 12. What that focuses can really be decided by the district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Following up on that, the, because the absenteeism, I obviously don't have the data in front of me, but it was not just at the high school level.
It was not, nope. It was.
Probably good for the follow-up session, we could get into it a little bit more. It's also, DESI is usually giving money when it's launching a new requirement. And they're changing the accountability or they're attempting to change the accountability system to increase the importance of student attendance and the outcomes. So we can get into a little bit of that into the spring.
That is, it's. Exploring the possibility, it's not, it's not, but it's on the docket, yeah.
Following their public outreach campaign of importance of attendance.
Yes.
I would say that there's strong advocacy coming out of the department at the moment for this. No judgment, just think we're getting prepared and they're starting to put seed money out to get us.
Any other questions for Heather?
Can parents expect to see the iReady results coming home?
Yes, yep. So we are working right now to prepare those letters that will come home digitally. So those will be sent home, emailed home to family members. That will be before February vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is a great addition to our, to our meeting schedules, so it's very nice.
Thanks for the time, appreciate it.
She'll be back in February.
Excellent. All right, so that concludes our business meeting agenda. I do have one other thing that I'd like to bring up that's procedural, so I think it's fair game. The way that we've typically done the budget hearings in the past, and I just didn't have it, it didn't come up for me until someone gave me an idea today, is that we prioritize the in-person attendant, attendees in terms of comments and engagement. A suggestion was made today that since we, we do have the virtual option that we consider going back and forth. I have feelings about the virtual option as a, as a whole. Generally speaking, it's, it can be difficult to manage in that way, but we are in it. And so for tonight, I don't actually care which way we do it. I just want to know from the group, do we have a preference? Would we like to keep with the way we've done it for tonight and then try something different next time? Would we like to try this tonight? Is there a hard stop for this meeting? Our agenda posted end time is 8:30. So that's a two and a half hour window for all of us, one and a half for the thing with the understanding that as usual, we'll have someone keeping an eye on the clock and we'll extend if we need to, just like we did last time.
I personally think it's fair to honor those who are online because we didn't make a distinction per se. So they may have contributions.
Oh, I'm sure they will. And there was no expectation that they wouldn't be able to. I just, I want to be clear about that. There's no expectation that they wouldn't be able to. The question is, do we want to do it in person first and then virtual? Or do we want to go back and forth one, one-on-one?
I would say start in person first.
I'm inclined to get that too. That's, that's why I asked about the hard stop though. I would like people online to have enough time to make their comments, assuming that they would. So why don't we try?
I would suggest that in the future, we make it clear on our postings that we will be prioritizing input from those who attended in person.
Yeah. Maybe on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, as time allows. Well, and here we are and we haven't posted that, so.
I did share it by social media today, but.
Certainly not something we can tackle tonight, but when there is time, you may want to just consider what's the purpose of hybrid? Is hybrid interactive?
Right.
Which is fine, then what are the rules of the road? Is hybrid watching but not participating? And then what are the rules of the road? Just we can clarify that and add it to all we're posting.
I think we'll need to, yes.
Although recognizing this is a, this is a different, this is not our typical meeting, right? Because it's a hearing, so.
Correct, right. But there, there is a bigger conversation, but you're right, this is a separate kind of thing. Okay, so do we have, all right, since we haven't already said otherwise, let's, let's do in-person tonight for one round of comments and then online for one round of comments. And then if there's time, we'll engage a second. If it looks like there are a lot of comments online and we're near the deadline, we will evaluate whether or not we need to stop earlier or extend it. Okay. Got it. All right, then we are.
Are we waiting until seven?
Yeah. Yes, so we have a 12-minute break, everybody. Feel free to go about your business.
We all know where that business is.
Yes.
Welcome everyone, but I invite you to go into the table, take a seat. All right, it is just a hair pass seven, so we're going to begin our public hearing. Budget hearing for tonight, I'm pretty equipped and chairperson for the MRS C School Committee. Thanks for being here, a lot of new faces, great. We love engagement, so thank you all for being here. Before I go any further, are there any boards that need to call into session at this point? Raise your hand if you know you're on board that needs to call into session. Nope, no Essex. US from Manchester, no. Okay, then you do not need to call them into session. We are already in session. So thank you for being here. This is different from one of our typical meetings in that it's an opportunity to get your questions answered in real time. In our traditional meetings during public comment, you're able to make comments, but we don't do a back and forth in that because the business meetings are first running our business. And sometimes that's frustrating, we understand, but the public hearings are a different situation. In December, we had our first of the two required public budget hearings. And that was right on the heels of Pam presenting the tentative budget to our committee for the first time in a meeting where we were able to ask our questions and discuss it together. And so we took that opportunity in December. I invited our committee to take that opportunity and they finally agreed to really engage in that as a listening session, to be taking in responses because we had had a chance to do that, of course engaging when appropriate. But it really was an exercise in listening to the responses to that tentative budget. Tonight, we're here five weeks later and we've had a chance to hear the responses and we've had a chance to continue our own discussion and everything. And this is an opportunity, you can expect more back and forth engagement tonight. If you, if you want, if you don't, that's fine too. If you want to make a comment and just leave your comment, that's fine. If you do have a question and you'd like us to engage with you, we are glad to do so and we're prepared to do so. We will, I will ask that as always, we keep it respectful of all viewpoints and parties. I will insist on that. If we are getting going and we're only hearing one viewpoint, I may take the liberty, as I've done in the past, of stopping and saying, just anyone who has opposing viewpoint or a different viewpoint, feel free to stand up and speak. I want to make sure that all viewpoints are represented here. The way this will work and we have decided we are going to do this for tonight and then maybe consider something else in future. But we will do this the same way as last time, which is we will prioritize in-person participants first for a round of comments. Well, first, after I'm done with this, Pam will present where she will wrap the tentative budget. Then I will invite our town partners, officials, the Board of Selectmen, Select Board and Finance Committee representatives, if they would like to make public comment. We had a really official coin toss virtually, like by video, so it was, it was a real deal. There was no shenanigans and Ruth can attest to that. So Manchester will go first and Essex will go second because Ruth won. So after the town officials, we will open it to public for comment. We will do one round of in-person engagement. And then we will open the chat, I will run, I'll ask Maria to open the chat for anyone joining us online to put their name and address in the chat. Also, if you do stand to make comment, do allow them to say your name and address very clearly, even if you're a frequent flyer and we're used to you and everything else, for poor Maria's sake. Please, your name and address nice and clearly. And then we, if we have time for a second round, then we may engage in that. But our posted end time for this is 8:30. I'm going to ask John, can you set a timer for 8:25? Everyone here now knows that I just asked him if his timer go off reminding us that it's 8:25. It's not personal, if you're the one speaking, you're saying something really egregious. I didn't plan it that way. You chose when you spoke. So at that point. At that point, our committee will decide together whether we need to make a motion to extend the meeting. Participation in meetings, policy can be found in section B E D H and B E D H dash E of the policy manual online. Let's keep it respectful, and thank you very much for being here. So, with that, Pam.
Thanks, everybody. One piece of business to get loaded, I realize. If you wanted to follow along, we did not have the capacity right now to run copies for everyone who would be here, but the packet that we're using tonight is like online, so you can grab it on your phone, or you can grab it on the laptop if you want to follow along and look at the numbers. I think you're going to see there's really, can you hear me, or do you want the microphone?
What?
While Pam's getting.
I talked to her briefly today. Not that he's like, where's my delivery? And I'm like, I said.
Hearing all about delivery? Please mute yourself if you're joining us by phone or online. We're grateful you're here. We have a request for a microphone. So, the packet that we're using tonight, as I said, if you want to follow along, but what I was starting to say is that I don't think you're going to find much new information if you have the tentative hearing or looked at any materials from the tentative hearing, because we have had no movement in the budget really since then. So, that's where we'll start tonight. With just a quick recap. So, when we presented in December, we went, we provided an overview and stated that the December budget is really our first look. It's typically a watermark. And at that time, we're working primarily on educated assumptions based on past trends or some early indicators from our healthcare provider, our healthcare program, rather. By January, sometimes we have tighter numbers, we know a little bit better what the outcomes are going to be. That's not the case this January. In fact, we won't have a real number on one of the largest variables, healthcare, until the end of January and most likely a finalized number at the end of March. So, we're going to need to build the adopted budget based on assumptions. What we know about healthcare, which is our second largest driver, is that early predictions are that it will reduce somewhere around 14 and a half percent for starters. And with some negotiation, the optimistic outcome would be 10% as of today. So, we're not going to see a lot of movement in that just yet. And you'll hear a little bit as we go why I think it's in our best interest to carry a higher number throughout March until we have some sense of where this might actually land. So, with the tentative budget, we talked about some key drivers that really under, underlie the reason for the growth rate that our budget has. And our top three drivers are personnel, healthcare, and out-of-district placement costs in terms of tuition and transportation. If you just take personnel, and that salary is the same deal we have this year coming back next year. We have to pay them their cost of living adjustment and whatever they get on the staff scale. Just to do that, you get to over 80%. So, if those two drivers are moving higher than 2 and 1/2%, and you're in the ballpark of the four, and what we just said, 14 and 1/2, plus you add on the next largest value, a variable of just replacements. That's the main reason why our budget growth rate is at 2 and 1/2%. We haven't even started talking about new programs or changes to programs or things you might want to add. In fact, when we do that, when we add things, we usually, we organize something within the district to generate revenue to invest in ourselves. And you're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. So, coming off the tentative budget and into January, no changes. The budget's designed to be carry-forward, meaning same programs and opportunities we provide for students today will be here next year. And we are not proposing any personnel cuts or change in, change in a level of staffing to achieve reductions for the overall life. You won't hear about some reorganization to achieve new things. So, for those who want to dig into the numbers, and I'm not going to read them to you, they're quite small, but if you have it up on your screen, this just gives you all of the actual numbers that go along with this tentative, but I asked. Right, so you get the actual dollar figure that goes along with your personnel increase for the year, the actual dollar figure on healthcare, the actual dollar figure on just replacements. And if you like the dollar figure side versus the percentage side, you'll see the, the total dollars there is going to exceed if the budget on grew at 2 and 1/2%. You need more dollars for the 2 and 1/2 appropriately. But, thank you. This is a bit of an outline from how we're approaching the recommendation budget for next year. So, my recommendation to this committee is to reform the carry-forward. Now, be it 3.4% growth rate in the schools, healthcare at the rate of 14 and 1/2%. That's a variable that we watch all the way through March, and if we get some relief, we of course would make some adjustments to the budget. This budget allows us to provide all the same opportunities for students next year that we did this year. Just heard we say that. That's level services. That's carry-forward. I know there's a lot of, there can be confusion around that phrase. It's been summarized to say, no cuts, no adds. Basically, we're working with the same size pie. We're not expanding the pie, and we're absorbing the cost of maintaining that size of the pie going forward into next year. And what that triangle illustrates is how we go about building the budget. So, the base of the budget, the pieces that create that carry-forward 3.4% number are the two lower categories. They're basically our required spending, something like special education, IMP management, out-of-district placements, having buses. Those are required spending. We may not want to have those things, those may be the things we choose to cut. We can't, they're not options for us. So, we'll always have to fund those pieces, but we have to come from someplace else. The second piece is really just basic programming and programming that's consistent with our neighbors, so that our schools or just in our states are well-equipped, just like our friend in Richmond or Ipswich or Rockford. Right, so there, it's not drills, it's the basics. It conforms to a basic program. The top tier is where you're going to hear me talk a little bit tonight about how we're achieving some reorganization to get some new things without adding any dollars to the budget. Historically, in district, if we wanted to make some changes and bring on a new program, we go through an exercise every year, the leadership team is great at doing this, of finding things that they outdated, outmoded, overstaffed, or could be staffed differently. Places to generate revenue within our budget, so we don't have to rely to reinvest in something that we want to take on in district. We talked a little bit about this at the tentative budget. What we're doing is we came up with some areas that we could tighten, trim, organize, restructure, to put dollars back into things we want to invest in for next year. So, that's that top tier. So, when we talk about enhancements or improvements to the program, we essentially self-fund from existing dollars. We're not asking for an expansion of the budget to do that. So, with a carry-forward budget, we can achieve most of what the principals and directors have asked for for next year through this reorganization process. The only other thing I would note about the carry-forward budget is that it already has within it a significant amount of other revenue. It includes $350,000 in what we call excess and efficiency funding. That's a reserve fund. It includes an increase in school choice dollars, and it also includes an OPEV offset. OPEV is other post-employment benefits, something I've learned along the way. It's basically a savings account to fund retiree health, with the assumption that as more people retire, they will live a good, long life, and we, we are responsible for parenting them until their demise. So, when someone retires. Say 25. I thought that was gentle. What's important to recognize, and why I bring it up, is I think sometimes when we think about someone retiring, they're retiring from the system, and their pension's paid by the state, but we continue to pay their retiree health to welcome to, to, to their lives, that's all. So, for every person that retires, it actually doubles the number of people on our health benefits. So, that's why we have some escalated costs. And the concept behind that benefit is that you plan for the fact that you're going to double these numbers over time, and you're not going to get rid of these people as it's a system. So, it's there to kind of serve as a certificate if people are familiar with special education. So, when your retiree health increases sharply or starts to outstrip your ability to pay within your budget, you can tap into that resource. So, we have started to tap that resource to create an offset to the general budget. So, combined, I think we have close to 900 million, 900,000 million dollars in offsets in the budget, trying to push ourselves, push that increase to an assessment level that's manageable by the town. So, with those dollars in there, we're still at 3.4% with our increases for next year. So, if we have all of this increase, how are we achieving it? You can hit the next slide. How are we achieving improvements in the system? I think you can go a little more. And this one's going to be hard to say. But, the team did a great job. They came up with some offsets as reallocation. And the page behind this, if you're looking online, will give you a detailed listing of what we're proposing to bring in and what we're proposing to reorganize to get there. Essentially, we're looking to bring in some instructional support, as well as fund a couple of specialty area teachers in special education because increasing enrollments in those areas. We're also hoping that we can raise enough, if we can get the budget into a position where we can bring all of our wants in to also start to build back some staffing in library, hopes that we can phase in libraries in the out years. Well, this sheet shows you, but this slide shows you, is how we get there in a budget neutral way. So, under a carry-forward budget, between use of reserves and managing costs, we're able to then dedicate these dollars to onboarding the staff without adding one, basically one dollar to the carry-forward budget, unless we want to do the full list. And I think, right now, it leaves us with $66,000 to find to accomplish our full list of asks from the principals, and we may be able to achieve that if healthcare actually comes down. So, I think the big watch we're going to have in March, in February, March is if that healthcare number comes down, what do we do with that, that savings, right? What do we do with those dollars? So, what this budget proposes, the carry-forward budget proposes taking the savings, applying it to the remainder of cost to bring in the asks for the principals and directors, so that'll be about $66,000 or 190, potentially $198,000, gain that. And then, use the rest of the money to buy their lower assessment, so maybe get closer to a 3% or 2 and 1/2% number, or invest in another area or address that I've yet identified. I think the pro of this is that going forward with the carry-forward budget as it's constructed here allows us some flexibility to deal with what is still sticking against that of our health. Because we assume everything's going to hold and go down, but there's no guarantee that it won't go up. And our basic principle has been, once the budget is passed, whether it's the tentative budget or now the adopted budget of February, we don't go up. So, if for some reason, something crazy happens, that healthcare number goes up and not down, it'll be on us to figure out how, what we're not going to do to achieve that. So, if we can do a carry-forward budget that comes in at 3.4%, which is our stable and predictable number that we've averaged for the past 10 to 15 years, a known number in what had been historically an accepted number for, for, for the district. We can do that, and we can achieve investments in new, new types of personnel by restructuring existing personnel or taking advantage of people retiring and reorganizing roles. I think the question is, why wouldn't we do any carry-forward budget? It seems to make good sense. It also creates an opportunity for lowering it as we go if there's some variables shifted in our favor. I think that's probably the question we're asking the public tonight, because in different, this is my perspective and this is my reputation. I think it's responsible. I think it gives us flexibility. It deserves a program for the kids, and it allows us to invest in the overall district program and personnel in a way that helps us target some support for student achievement, some areas that we identified in Heather's story earlier, earlier November, some areas that we're struggling, some areas that we want to. If you're looking at this in terms of building and maintaining the program and the quality of the schools, I think carry-forward makes the best sense. If the goal is to get to a certain number, because that's a real concern, to get to 2 and 1/2, one might say, well, if we structured all of these things and came up with $500,000 to redistribute, just apply that to the bottom line and convert it down to 2 and 1/2%. That's a very different way of looking at it. It's not what I'm advocating. But I think it's a question from us tonight, which is, how should we use our ability to find efficiencies, look creatively at situations, take advantage of your attrition? Should we look at it as a reinvestment in our district in a way to build toward the goals that we've set? Or should we be looking at it more certainly in terms of just meeting bottom line? So, I'm going to look for feedback from you on that tonight, as I prepare for February 6th and maybe a final recommendation, but this is where I am this evening. So, I think that closes out my views. Teresa, you ready?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So, the way we will do this is, we don't have like a mic to come to, to line up, that sort of thing, it'll be a little bit less formal about this. I'm tempted to put my chair up here so that I can see better, but I'm not going to do it because it's just a bad look. So, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand, wait for me to, to acknowledge you, and then stand up, say your name, address, and make your comment. So, I see one back, I'm going to go back here first, then here, and then we'll, I'll go from there. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I messed that up. We have the, no, we have the towns first. I'm sorry, I said in advance I was going to do it, and I knew it. We have the coin flip and everything. Okay. Manchester. Any Manchester town officials, please?
You want to call me?
Still have to say.
Ann, Tower of 13, Tuxport Road, Manchester, here, thank you. Will you contact me this afternoon? I wasn't thinking very well, because in fact, I cannot represent the Manchester Select Board. And I'm going to take advantage of, given me the microphone, to say that I have been following schools and school budgets since before the district started. I have never seen a year when the problems balancing the needs of the two towns has been worse. And I don't think that that's something that can be solved either by, by the towns themselves. I think the school committee has to take the question, how the schools are paid for, much more seriously than you have in the past. That's my opinion. Nothing to do with the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I recognize that the boards are posted, but this is a courtesy that I will continue to extend if there are any board officials who wish to speak. Are there any other Manchester Select Board or Finance Committee people here, or I would send this to Greg as well, if anyone would like to say? Essex?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. So, I'd be worried, just a quick statement. Oh, Ruth, 30, 50, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
At the all-boards meeting in September, as well as the MRSU budget hearing on December 13th, the town of Albert's community decided to approach a 45%. Last night, the boards went to a meeting, we took a straw poll of opposition.
Thank you. Anyone else from Essex? Is there any other boards left in, yeah, wishing to speak?
Don't care, Spring Street, Essex, 101 or Spring Street, 21, I'm. In December, at Spring Farm, discussed the, the school budget. We discussed the upper limits, given the ease of our, all of our access capacity. Last year, the budget would be 2 and 1/2% as a budget increase. I think it's important to understand that when you're looking at a budget from a tax perspective, the, this budget that Pam is presenting tonight represents a $500,000 increase to assets. Our top 2 and 1/2% increase on our total budget is 360. Our top two and a half percent increase on our total budget is 365,000 dollars. So last year, there was no override in Essex that did not pass. We used our two and a half percent, and we used all of our excess capacity eight years' work. So trying to meet the obligation of $500,000 in a failed override leaves Essex in a very tough position. We, last year, began with a 7.12 apportionment at the first round of budget and ended up at 3.93. Still, again, using excess capacity and our two and a half percent. So from an Essex perspective, you can end up with your town departments having nothing. So with $365,000 to work with, a school district, and a town, and you have your contractual obligations, we have our contractual obligations, it leads us to nowhere except for override and no excess capacity to call back on.
Any other members of the finance committee? Okay, now we will turn to the public. I am not going to do this. I want you all to hand it to each other when I point. It's like the talking spot.
Really colored one, it's green. Pride Restaurant, 30th Street, Essex. I want to take a moment to thank the school committee and the district leadership for being thoughtful stewards of the tactics. We often hear about how expensive schools are, but we hear that in the back of our own community. When compared to other districts, it becomes clear how well this district is looking out for us. We said over the last 10 years, the mortgage has gone up an average of 3.545% in our year. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, school operating expenditures in the Rock City Districts were only by average of 4.03% for FY13 to FY2017. Budget 3.45, expenses 4.03, roster 30. Over the last 10 years, Pam's bills are comparable. Their budget has gone up now to 3.5%. Again, 3.45%, 3.9%. Sometimes these comparables are hard to find information over time. But even if you look at last year, Berlin Wells went up seven, over 17% in a single year. Murdering was at 1.1. That's a attack over the last eight years, 4.68%. And we were, we got a, we didn't override last year, whatever, 5.96%. And then you get into kind of this year, and it appears we're worried about what's going on in Beckenburgh. And they are saying, oh, we can't do, we're going to be between five and five and a half percent. And then the select board in, in Hapleton, in the second, we can't be at five, we can fit 4.4. So completely different story that we're talking about here. I think that's important to realize. You know, I'm not saying we should ignore savings, but as a reminder, the work we've done, the district has already done, it keeps us down. So yes, education is expensive and a substantial part of our budget. Yes, we want to protect and protect distressed communities in our town, especially in our financial environment. These other districts are dealing with those same issues, the same problem of inflation, the same problem of declining enrollment. Our district's parents are not a better job managing issues, but we have a different reality that our community can control the impact of conditions. Finishing the school budget, the possible department, essentially both of them. That in mind, my family fully supports the budget increase, and she is running a capable, document in mind, our purchases. That still means we're being more efficient in other districts while maintaining strength when it's not having to have issues. Such a difficult process for me. Leaving aside individual towns, looking at the rest of the district as a whole, it might look like the majority of the district wants this too. I said, it's not in the sense of how it's going to be, it might play out, so we forget that point. But some clear minds, we often talk about acting like one district, but they could be devolved, they're just going to shoot individual ones, and then that whole. Crossbow, the Manchester Town Meeting in Essex, go last spring, despite the fact that town meeting turned out as always far less than downtown. More people in the district, politically, really high school level. So I'll say these things again, despite the. Vote right. Okay, it's a terrific one. Remember, you're focusing on the students, and to maintain your historical high towards efficiency. We understand this place is a special part of taxpayers, and we're happy to deal with that as taxpayers. I think that's up to us, the taxpayers, to deal with that, and let the school committee do their job. Thank you.
Robert Jonesbury, 126th Eastern Avenue in Essex. I wanted to speak tonight as a resident of Essex since 2001 and a high school Spanish teacher at our school since 1998. So that's 25 years. I got my crystal apple. For those that know me, I couldn't love my job anymore. I love being with the kids. And for me, it's been a lot of the staff, seeing how the budget crisis has really affected kids. And some of us were here in the spring, we heard kids in the teaching defending program. I want to try and speak as plainly and clearly as I can because I know that there's a lot at stake. But these, you know, these young people in the communities of Manchester Essex, these young people I get to interact with every day as a teacher deserve all of our best efforts to give them the quality education that they deserve. And I feel like that energy is in the town of Essex. I know that it is there, and I know that, you know, in the initial town meeting, as we've just spoken about, there was an initial large majority, and then I think that energy was like, oh, we did it. And with the ballot, it did not pass. That is the message to all of us in Essex. We need to understand that we need to be active participants and make sure that we're voting in a coherent way. As we've heard tonight, the cost of simply carrying forward the existing program that our district offers is 3.4%. You know, some residents of Essex, along with the finance committee, have stated that they are both unwilling and unable to go beyond the five, the 2.5%. I don't agree with that. I feel like the energy is here in our, in our community of Essex, the support and override. Simply, but this 2.5% number, if it is adhered to strictly this budget scheme, we're going to be cutting in for the program in our school along with the board staff. We got an idea of what this could be, what could be on the top of the block at the budget hearing in the spring for students to do the course of the bend in the amazing program in our schools. But what's much worse than the idea of not ever going above 2.5% is that we'll be setting ourselves up with an even more frightening future for our young people going forward with a lower base budget number to start budget talks going forward. We'd be constantly in a losing battle as our school budget goes up against the normal levels of inflation that happen in life. And recently, we know levels have not been very normal, right? Costs of things rise, right? 2.5, if we strictly adhere, it is simply not sustainable. In short, the strict adherence to the 2.5% max number will continue to complete our district more and more program as we move forward into the future. With our recent budgetary struggles, we've already seen larger elementary school classes, the 24 kids packed into a room. I know the school committee visited those classrooms. We've heard of the post cuts to music art. In my department of foreign language, they've already removed our robust elementary school program. We had an 812 language program. It's gone now. And, you know, with that removal from the elementary school this year, they also have taken it away from sixth grade. So we're trying to just keep the program that we have, we're not trying to add the old, any bells or whistles. We're trying to help the kids get the education they deserve. Never moving above 2.5% as the finance committee would have it, simply be a wrecking ball to the education of this community. We need the. And it's going to be. In which provide? Child needs. How does it override our town at least the last 14 years? I feel like someone could correct me, it could be way, way longer than that. It's time to act as a community when this comes to vote. We need to support educating the children in our community. Set the budget straight with a small override this year so we can preserve the program in this freaking amazing school and all amazing schools in our district. And, you know, I'm completely proud to work with this district, and I know that that energy, the passing override is there. And I assume the school committee to fund a budget that is right for our children.
Here? 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 You guys pay attention to that?
Can I do something real quick? The, from the viewers, is that to be close to the owl is for people to hear. They can't hear you online.
Okay.
And the chat is closed?
The chat's intended to be closed. Why don't you come stand right up in the middle? How's that look? Sorry.
Like a little more silly, that would be great.
She's a great person to be the example for how.
No question. No question.
Hi, my name is August Capitazzo. I live on 15 Apple Street, Essex. I'm a sophomore at Manchester Essex, and I realize that the proposed schedule change is directly impacted by the budget cut and the need for resources between the middle and high school. However, I want to make everyone aware how adversely affected the students and the teachers are going to be throughout this change. Firstly, turning to the 60-minute U blocks into, turning the 60-minute U blocks into only around 35 in the proposed plan. For me, U block is the only time that I can go and see my teachers, interview my peers and the faculty for my journalism class, meet with my fellow class officers, do group work with my classmates, or meet with my guidance counselor to discuss my academic teacher. Taking away from the resource that is U block will only harm the student body and create more stress, which will also increase when switching from the 60-minute classes to around 45 to 50 minutes. As a high school student, those 60 minutes are crucial when we're conducting chemistry labs or we are taking an exam. Going back to a middle school schedule will only cut class discussions short in English and history and give students less time to dive into the subject and fully grasp the materials, which will be detrimental to not only our academic grades, but to our mental health as now we have six classes to work towards in a day rather than five. And what happens when a student misses, is out sick and misses an exam? That's now a 50-minute test that they have to take in a roughly 35-minute U block. Neither the student nor the teacher should be expected to give up their lunch or stay after school, nor will the latter be feasible for most students. I live in Essex, both of my parents are employed, I'm not old enough to drive yet, and we've already cut our late buses from our budget, which means that many students would be left without a way home. This is yet another example of budget cuts unfavorably impacting students, which we. As early as our elementaries and middle school, it's unfair to then put these kids into a high school that doesn't have the funding to provide them with the resources that they need in order to be successful post-high school. If we don't increase the budget soon, we're only perpetuating the rapid decline of our school system as a whole. I didn't speak today, and I hope that you will all consider supporting.
It's in the right top and center. We're going there, right in the middle for the people at home.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Stone, 69 Pleasant Street in Manchester. Good evening, I would like to first thank and acknowledge the school committee members and administrators who took time to personally write to me after my remarks at the last budget carrying meeting. I really appreciate your time. Your thoughtful words of reflection and acknowledgement reinforce to me how grateful I am that my family is a part of the Manchester Essex Public School Community and that my children attend a public school. It's there to me that we have dedicated and inherent people supporting our schools. I think I've already clearly voiced my commitment to advocating on behalf of our children and their teachers, specifically in regards to increased supports for literacy instruction. However, I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to build my case further in light of the January 11th article in the Boston Globe entitled, "In Massachusetts' Richest Towns, Many Top-Brained Schools Point to Outdated Methods of Teaching Reading." At the December budget hearing, I shared my professional feelings and observations about how the ingredients needed to effectively support a child's education have significantly changed in the last decade. I'm a seventh grade English teacher in a neighboring district. As an educator with decades of experience, I have observed firsthand how essential instructional coaches and media literacy specialists, otherwise known as librarians, are in order to cultivate not only a culture of readers within a school, but to ensure that our media students are not slipping through the cracks when it comes to their literacy growth. Just like any other professional, teachers must stay current in their field with additional training and support as research is constantly evolving around instructional approaches, strategies, and interventions, specifically when it comes to the science behind reading. Last month, I made the case that instructional coaching at the elementary level would be a valuable long-term investment as research shows that literacy interventions are most effective with emerging readers. In the January 11th Globe article, the State Secretary of Education, Patrick Tubular, said, "The earlier we intervene, the bigger the impact we can have on students' ability to read," according to the data. Because there are so many factors that are impacting today's child, their acquisition of proficient reading skills, including but not limited to technology, the pandemic, and social emotional struggles, our educators need experts to consult on best practices and how to successfully meet the needs of all learners. Also, in that same January 11th Globe article, Stephen Aaron Brook, Aaron Brook and Brookline School Committee member said, "School boards everywhere need to be screaming about this. Literacy instruction that's not aligned with evidence does such trauma and hard-to-meditate damage to kids." By funding instructional coaches, we are providing the structures in our schools that allow for teachers to effectively address, adjust their instruction to target weaknesses in the critical emerging literacy years. So our children enter middle and high school confidently able to tackle complex texts and are focusing on reading to learn, not learning to read. In my current role as a seventh-grade DLA teacher, I am trying to scaffold every day my instruction for far more students who are struggling learning to read. In seventh grade, they're 12 years old, and they're still needing phonics instruction. And therefore, often finding themselves frustrated and disengaged when they are trying to read more difficult grade-level texts. And I cannot stress enough, I think we are naive as parents to think because we are in a higher achieving district that this problem does not affect us. Because it does, I mean, the data is showing us that. Finally, I just want to share that I truly believe that the mental health of our children rests on our ability to be confident readers and writers. I see every day increasing behavioral problems, depression, and anxiety in my classroom. Many of these struggles are directly tied back to a child's confidence in their literacy skills. Investing early and equipping our teachers with the overdue support that will allow them to meet the demands of today's classroom is imperative for not only our children's future, but the future of our greater community. I once again plead that you fund a budget that includes instructional coaches and the reinvestment in librarians at the middle and high school. It's our job as parents and educators to advocate for students' needs, and I hope that both Manchester and Essex Town leaders recognize the vital need to fund the education of our children. And I just want to close by saying that I think a lot of times we look at a budget if you're not in education, and you look at the bottom line and, you know, what can you cut? Cut the fad, it's hurt all those terms. And in education, I just think you need to understand that this is our future. Like, kids need to read to be successful in the future. So if we are not investing in these critical services, I just, I'm really worrying for all of us for the greater community. So thank you very much.
One here, and one more over there, and then I'll leave you.
Not very good with mics. I'm used to projecting with my very loud voice, so if you're speaking loudly, yell at me, and I'll stop.
No, it's okay, because the people at home can't hear this.
I don't have any. Who are you? Right, sorry, Wyatt and Wyatt Hakiisu, 101 Martin Street. But I don't have statistics today. I don't have big numbers or great suggestions. But I do have my story today as a high school student who graduated last year. And as somebody who's trying to be a teacher now, I'm currently working inside the high school as a foreign language aide because the foreign language department has been a huge part of my own growth. I'm sure that you can see some similarities between me and one of my teachers. But truly, there have been so many other teachers that have been extremely foundational to my growth as a person and my pursuit to educate that I could not name them all. And with hand in hand, there have been so many programs that have done the same. I mean, I remember Merivista. I remember going to Washington, DC. I remember having a librarian, like we just heard about. The late bus saving me from getting left at the school for hours. There have been countless opportunities that just aren't there anymore now. And coming back here to work as a teacher has honestly been a little saddening. Not because I'm sad to work with. Not because I'm sad to work with my idols, but sad because this is not the way that it was when I grew up. It's not the way that it was when I was inspired to be a T. And that we already have people and money. With that, I would be very, very saddened to see this trend of us losing our resources and our amazing staff continue. And I hope it doesn't so that I can come back and I can be a teacher and I can smile and laugh and inspire others as I have been inspired. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Cummins and I live at 50 Walker Road. I'm here today to support the French program. Last year, the proposed budget cut included a phase-out of the MERSD French program. We need to ensure that this type of cut is not entertained in any current or future budget proposals. If you've never lived in the world of our French program, it might be hard to understand why French is needed in a world language program that also teaches Spanish. In the same way that someone who hasn't lived in Manchester or Essex might not understand why these towns matter when there are other towns that we can live in on the North Shore. If you live in Manchester or Essex, then you already understand why our hearts are deeply connected to our hometowns, why we choose to live here now, and why we feel a duty to preserve and protect our communities. If you have not experienced our French language program, then I am here to help transport you to the beautiful corner of the French-speaking world that Madame Cocho and Madame Fortunato have created for us. When I enter a French classroom at MERHS, I'm not sitting down for B block. I am entering a gateway. I will be transported to a French-speaking world that has captured my heart and that has come to feel like home. I am building the language skills that I will carry with me through my life, whether communicating with French-language speakers here at home or away in a French-speaking part of the world. Madame Cocho is a bridge to France, the French language and French culture. As a French native and an enthusiastic Francophile, she had her stories and experiences don't just teach us a language. They open our hearts to a culture that's rich, vibrant, and deeply human. Beyond the classroom, with Madame Cocho's help, we have created a French club and a French literary magazine to further enrich our experience. Madame has another learning. On top of it, to make complex grammatical concepts engaging, she welcomes us to a diverse Francophone world, sharing her only overlooked in Africa. It is important for students to have the choice to pursue a language that resonates with us personally. Our ability to choose to learn French, Spanish, or both languages is a huge strength for our school and contributes greatly to our enjoyment and success as world language students. For those of us drawn to French, whether due to cultural heritage, personal interest, future career goals, or simple curiosity, this decision and investment in our education and cultural language growth is meaningful. It allows us to take ownership in our journey as we become global citizens. Madame Cocho and Madame Fortunato have produced a beloved French language program that is critical to our school's spirit and identity. Members of the school committee, I hope you understand that we must protect our French language program from any future proposed budget cuts.
I don't see any hands up currently, so we, oh, now they're coming up. Okay. We have had, I think, six or so, five or six people with similar viewpoints. It sounds very in favor of this, the level services budget carrying forward. I know there are people with different viewpoints, and I want to make it clear is it's very difficult for us when we have these opportunities and people don't use the opportunity to speak. And I know it can be difficult when you feel like you're one of the only people who has opposing viewpoint, but this is where your chance to be heard takes place. And please don't come at us after and say how it was too scary. You can do this. We'll be nice. So right now, if there's someone who would like to express a different viewpoint, please raise your hand. I would love to hear from you. Okay, I will take you two in a row. You two still have to stand in the front and center though, so everyone can watch you doing.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anne Salamudas. I live in 20 Harlow Street in Essex. So I went to the budget workshop that was at last Tuesday, and I think what I'm hearing is that the school committee is $350,000 to help fill the gap in order for growth to come in at around 3.4%. And I see in the discussion amongst member of the budget meeting coaches. How is it decided who needs coaching and who doesn't? As for the teachers who will be receiving the coaching, will they be asked where they feel they need support so that the coaching can be more useful to each specific teacher, or will it be more general? Since Essex Elementary is a Title I school, I'm curious to know how the Title I funds have been spent? And is it enough to impact student achievement? Have we even asked our elementary school teacher how they might be able to align the two elementary school curriculums so that they are more equally matched? Have we asked our elementary school teachers where they see holes in the curriculum and what they think we could do to fill that gap? In past budgets, I noticed there were school-by-school budget pages that listed staffing and operating budget numbers, and I am wondering why we didn't have those this year. When looking at the staffing report in regard to counselors and psychologists, Essex Elementary has 1.4 FTEs while Memorial has 1.6. Is this number purely based on the number of students in the school, or is it based on needs? With chronic absenteeism cited as a major problem at Essex Elementary and mental health issues being cited as part of that reason, resources should be allocated to the population that needs it the most. Another data point I believe should be considered is the demographic in the member towns. How has it changed in the past five to 10 years? What is the projected demographic in the next five to 10 years? Do families move out of the district after their kids graduate high school? Why or why not? Funding an override has lasting implications for the towns, and they must be considered. I believe what is keeping Essex from approving an override is that we have not seen a return in our investment at the elementary school level. If the override passed last year, would M-PAS scores have been any different? And because we had a compromised budget, does that mean M-PAS score this year should not be expected to change? I think if the district, I'm going to go a little off the rails. I think if the district would be willing to put forth an additional $150,000 as a signal to Essex residents that they will focus on Essex student achievement, give it a year or two, and then perhaps Essex may consider an override. I just believe that if you are not actively trying to improve student achievement at the elementary level, then you're kind of okay with that level of achievement, and I just don't think that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. There were a number, there were a number of questions asked there, so I'd like to give, we are able to engage. So yeah, so I'd like to give you a chance to respond, and then I actually have a question based on, on that.
It's going to be me and a couple of other people, but I'm going to start.
Did anyone write down what all of the questions, I'm trying.
I'm going to try.
We might, I know someone who wrote it all down.
We'll start with merging the elementary perdu in program and seeking to correct trends that we've seen. I've seen some people, see some people in the audience who part of this conversation or, but I believe might be and someone referenced the New York Times article. Well, articles. So prior to COVID, we engaged in we've worked since in my hour. Okay. And it I don't confirm it's a big change. I know that this that we're even ahead of the curve on making the transition to the science-based age. I don't know the reason that's again. Secondly, when we adopted a science-based we also asked the principals to create one elementary master schedule to ensure that there was equal amount of learning in each of such areas in both schools. And so we could platoon all of our reading specialists and math specialists to go to the site in which it was the greatest problem. So that on the trimester, looking at data, we could create case modes based on need, based on having X amount of staff in one building. So two years ago, we took all of these school-based staff and worked with district staff, and they now are under supervision for the record. So we have made some significant steps in that area. The next phase of that is this NEAS process that I mentioned earlier. We're currently going through the process of accreditation at the elementary school. Both schools are working together with the Woodland Association of School Technologists. It's, when we get entry into this process, it starts with exactly what you have with self-examination, assessment, alignment, and self-reporting of where we are, where we think we're strong, where we think we need some improvements. They send it to them to analyze our self-assessment based on their observations, and then they give us a set of recommendations and do or do not confer accreditation at that point. But this is step one into an ongoing relationship that this organization, they're in for the high school as well. And it's a 10-year, the annual cycle, and we just keep going through it, the self-examination. So that's what we've been doing to address the issues, so I don't know that necessarily there's a dollar figure related to the group of student achievement, but there are structures which dollars can fund that I think that gets there. Maybe get another talk about how we keep the instruction for students will get there. You know, when you're having like, maybe she'll just like comment on sort of the Title I aspect.
I thought. I'm sorry, can you come closer to the owl so people at home can hear? So I don't know if it's Heather or Pam, maybe even Sheila or John, who could address how elementary teachers have been working across elementary schools within their curricular areas to align instruction.
Okay. Does the view just follow the question here? The question about the coaching, so I think I answered the question of like how, how is it determined that the coaches would work with what teachers and on what topic? So we're really exploring setting up a structure so that the coaches will actually interact with all, with some, and with few, almost like we support with students, so that the instructional coaches would be providing us with, no, thank you, I would, providing us with in, in district internally-supported professional learning that really lets us stay current with the current field research that allows us to align our craft to what the, what we're seeing in the field, what evidence-based practices say, and ensure that we're meeting those expectations identified by gaps in their mass literacy, specifically in the most foundational literacy gaps as we move up through. And so what that would look like is that idea of instructional coaches providing professional development for all teachers, and that could be during early release professional development days, whether interacting with teachers during basic meetings, one way identifying need, even then how that they have an appropriate strategy. This is a resource that has support. And supporting early readers who are instructional leaders in the building. So that that other group are maybe or either recording, so it can be small. Coaching. So there it could be a certification of my professional learning goal, something that's right in the classroom. This instructional coach could partner with me to also make an observe our practice and we could need. It could also be based on data or identifying a trend in need, and that this coach could provide that additional in-house support in a really responsive way. So it's almost models for us as adults, as community learners, that tiered support of everybody gets support, small groups get support, and then we can target that individual through that identification of data's telling me what I need, and I as a professional know I need to grow in that targeted area for that coaching assignment. The question about the curriculum gaps in alignment is a great question. We've started that work at the elementary level this year, so what are students are in those really these days are getting together across both Essex and Memorial. And what we've started to do is actually memorialize that for curriculum resource for literacy, which is 1020. And it is aligned and meets those criteria based on the reports and query from Desi. And the teachers are getting together across their classrooms that are noting out of this tool, what are those consistent practices all of our students get? The beautiful thing about the curriculum is there's a lot in there. The challenge is there's a lot. So they're meeting as the students say, what are those core learning experiences all students across all of our classes are getting? How do we make sure we're experiencing similar pacing? How are we assessing to make sure that we're meeting success for students? And what are those standards we're aligning to? Part of that process is actually identifying what you mentioned is where are we finding gaps? Perhaps there's places we're using different tools. Perhaps we're noticing this unit is not meeting all of those criteria we're expecting. And that gap analysis is by coming through our curriculum leadership team, which is a group of teachers across grades of schools, and we're using that curriculum mapping process of teachers to name where are there places we may need additional support? And what does that next step look like? And that is a piece that is in the capital request is we've been hearing anecdotally about we could clearly writing. So we're fighting for it, what that need will be feel like, really going to come from that data collected from the curriculum maps by the teachers. And then that was the question you had.
So what works with elementary teachers are doing to maybe for that structure.
So that they're, that makes curriculum, which is really what, you know, what is that regular, those regular experiences. And then additionally is what we can have, they're actually needing as grade-level teams to get across district to look at assessment results, talk about what's working well consistently across, and maybe where are there places of strength and where are there places of need, and they're sharing their practices, setting tier ones with goals collectively as well. So that
I'll speak to as a former sorry. One of the the one is with a lot of misconceptions around that, that assumes that if funds come to particular schools of only students of a certain poverty level are allowed those services that have been correct. What, what happens in a regional district or any, there are multiple ways for you to kind of look at your data. And but the fact that Essex, the money awarded to Title I funds that are awarded to Essex is really because Manchester Essex has wisely taken advantage of different ways that you could look at the money in order to get the money. So that money that is afforded to Essex is not much, and I don't know if you So that money that is afforded to Essex is not much. And I don't know if you know the number, but I think it's.
Forty-four thousand.
Yeah, it's forty-four thousand dollars. It's very minimal. And that is above the, um, so if you look at the budgets that are afforded to each of the schools, that forty-four thousand can't be considered part of Essex budget, has to sit on top by all kinds of rules and all kinds of assessments and all kinds of forms that we all have to sign and the audits that happen. So it doesn't, it doesn't afford too much. So the staff that we have that gets paid by that, there's some directorships of that. There's a little bit of materials because if kids that do need those services, they get more. Uh, they have to be supplemented. There is nothing materials. And then there's just a teensy little bit that goes towards staffing. So that's one of the drivers that also helped for the MDSF team to be a district team, force those to be district team. So we could better use those resources.
Can I just hit one more?
Yeah.
There were a couple of our questions in there.
So, um, you've got the title one, the title one to the year is in. The budget.
One thing I wanted to hit, um, so while I'm prepping my next piece, the budget pages, the budget pages will be forthcoming. So you will see all that typically they come out in January. We're just running, I am running a little bit behind on some of the production items. I'm not going to lie. But this is a good opportunity. I think the staffing question was an important one. And this is a great opportunity to, um. Because this has come up. Now. More. Essex and there's this.
To the tentative budget packet, and it really hasn't changed. But I'm going to come up and I'm going to just try and just fill a couple of this concept. So Memorial has sixty more students, plus sixty more students than Essex. Memorial carries the pre-K which contributes to some of the staffing balances. So if you're looking at general education classrooms, eight, one, three, four, five, Essex has two sections per grade level. Memorial has two sections per grade level, except for one grade level carries three. So basically they're, they're equally matched with the average class size between nineteen and twenty. So that's, that's a break even. General education specialist teachers, that's art, music, PE. It's likely larger population. At Memorial, all of the staff at this point save the PE teachers or share. So it's simply three point three for Essex, four point four. Both schools get the same meeting time for art, music, PE, technology, and library. This is just how we need to allocate staff to ensure based on the population and the number of sections per grade level that they have the right number of staff to go with that. Now you're going to see student services teachers, that's those are our reading specialist, math specialists, and then somebody in there. But those are service teachers for students equally matched at two point five. Special education teachers, this is where you're going to see the greatest disparity and there's a very, there is a very clear reason for that. Our special education teachers at Memorial, Memorial houses the majority of our specialized programs. So Sale, Earl, those are some separate pull-up programs which run at about a one to eight ratio and include not only teaching staff, but also student TA contingency. So those programs plus the pre-K, which at its base is a specialized education program, or we have an integrated pre-K, but the basis of which is our education. Uh, we have special education students who bring that into district early so that they don't end up in out-of-district replacements providing the services. And we support that program with a robust peer pals tuition-based complement to it, which is really funding a good portion of the pre-K program. But those specialized programs and the pre-K increase. The educations. School maybe can't look a bit less sided. Um, Essex still carries a program. And that's where you see two of the FTEs. But in terms of of the. Population. Second chair is. Does it mean they're locking in from point six and point four is, is the FTE split? I would say they go back and forth as needed between both buildings, same as therapists, counselors, and psychologists. Um, the sixth, the point one, the point six is really one person split me to, me to. Some of this also tracks, which you're finding, we're talking about the personnel in terms of budget, some of it also tracks to just how we account for it. We share one psychologist at the elementary level. Each building has its own dedicated adjustment counselor. So the psychologist, just for the record, is a special education role, primarily involved in evaluation and assisting with the identification of students. They will play some support roles for students on I U E's or need specialized services. But when you think of the day-to-day supports of students in housing services as our adjustment counselor in both schools, even though slightly different enrollments are equally staff, are staff equally, and the same with the nurse. So hopefully that just gives you a little sense of why it may appear that there's slight staffing indifference. Uh, slight staffing difference between the two, but really enrollment drives it and it's, uh, they are on. I think we covered all.
Yeah. So I know you're next. Uh, I just, I have a question back since this, this is intended to be a two-way conversation and Aunt Nella really is on the spot here, but I know her and I know she can handle it. So, thank you. So one of the comments when you, you said you were going off the rails was a suggestion that if the school committee instructed the district to put in an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves, that doesn't get Essex out of override territory according to their own stated need. So are you suggesting that that's a number that, that you feel comfortable brings, brings the growth down to a different rate? Or was it just a number kind of off the top of your head? And the reason I ask is because, as we know, when, when this funding cliff started four years ago, we're in the fifth, fifth year of this. This started with a thirty-eight thousand dollar ask to, to help out the town of Essex. And I'm a member of the town of Essex. I'm in favor of helping each other out. But when you put that through to bring that, to bring that down for one, you have to multiply it up. So if it's, if it's thirty-nine percent, then it goes up, you know, certainly it used to be two, there's one. But what I want to understand for you is, are you suggesting at that level, if we were using five hundred thousand dollars of OPEP contribution, that then you would feel like you support that? Or are you just? Interesting what you're asking.
If I, if I read it correctly, I think the gap for Essex is going to be more than that. I think that what is on the tentative FY twenty-five budget is five hundred thousand. Am I not correct on that?
Are you a gap for Essex? Yeah. Okay. So we deal in the numbers of like the growth of the district. I'm not, I'm not well versed in what the growth would be based on what we do for.
No, I thought it was off the FY twenty-five budget.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. And so I'm thinking, as I said, because we feel like, so if the override had passed last year, Teresa, right?
Yeah.
Our MCAST was still big, right? So in, in some ways I'm saying, well, you know, Essex didn't pass the override last year and maybe rightly so. Because we, we don't know what we're actually paying for because our MCAST scores have been so low at the elementary level. And so what I'm saying is as more, um, I guess in good faith or as a, as sort of signaling to us, uh, the town of Essex, that we will focus in on improving student achievement at Essex Elementary. And we're going to show you that by, um, funding the five hundred thousand to Essex. We're going to fund that as a, not like a promise, but really like, we're going to really focus on Essex. And this is how we're showing you we're focusing on it. And then in the next year or two, score should improve, I'm thinking with instructional coaches and the math that we're doing virtually with the kids at school. And then I think in a couple of years, once we see these scores significantly rise, I think you'll have more on your side saying, look, we've done, we've put all this effort into Essex. We, we funded your gap for, for a year specifically to give more to Essex Elementary so their achievement came up. And so now can we talk a little bit more in depth about an override? Now it's the temperature of has it cooled a little bit?
Interesting.
About an override. Am I making?
I'm understanding what you're saying. I think I was asking a different question, but in explaining it, no, that's all right. I'm, I'm getting what I need from it. So again, we're in the information gathering. We haven't passed a budget yet. Um, we're not in the business of deciding whether the town gives an override. So I, I'm still trying to understand the input from people as to whether they want us to bring a carryforward budget if they want us to reduce the, the cost.
Am I correct, though, in understanding that? I have to understand. And to that, the suggestion is to take five hundred from the district reserves. And from our first, because we have to, because of the apportionment formula. We can't draw from our reserves only for one town.
Is that what you were asking? I'm sorry. I may have misunderstood.
Well, so maybe I misunderstand.
That's all right.
Because, because you're saying you're willing to put more three fifty, right?
There, there's three fifty, three hundred fifty thousand dollars of reserves included in, included in this budget currently of access and deficiency. And then an additional hundred and fifty from the OPEP contribution. So there's, that's money from district accounts, right? That's being budgeted for the budget that Pam is presenting to us right now. So what I was hearing you say may have been different, what you were saying.
So maybe if we just take the specific numbers off, I don't know why it would triple to one point five.
Because we can't, we truly are not allowed to offset the bill for one town without it impacting the other. That's what I was explaining with that. That's legally, we're not allowed. That's why when it was a thirty-eight thousand dollar ask, we had to extrapolate that out based on the apportionment formula, and it ended up being a hundred thousand dollars after a couple more reductions. kidding? Please go ahead. And this is an important point that we're clarifying.
Why we're not in a crisis, but it often feels like a crisis because it's a simple, like if you could just reduce your budget, impact Essex fifty thousand dollars, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cuts, reductions, or revenue to get there. So there is a lot, you know, I think Robbie kind of nailed it. We are trying to sound the warning bell early that we're on a path that isn't going to lead us to growth. But. Doors aren't going to fall off. Come on. The, the doors will open. They share. Kids will come to school and they'll have a great program. But we're on year six, five, five or six of this same process of, and we build a bridge if we can just get it down fifty. But we're not talking about investing even beyond just rolling the wall. So I think that's the stressor from the program management side, from the grading in environment for growth. And I'll just say, I would do what you will with this. I would never tie in financial figure to a student, direct student outcome. I just, there are so many variables that are going to go into a particular cohort's success. The numbers are not where we wanted them to be. One shot in time over particular grade levels that may look very different by the time. So I would. Source from. As you were. I would not take the money with that expectation.
Thank you for engaging. I appreciate that. Um, Katie, a moment next. If you time it right, you might get the alarm.
I can talk fast. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm not here to give an anti-override speech, but I am here to offer.
Oh, Katie.
Katie Bandy, one seventy-one Western Ave. Sorry. I'm not here to give an anti-override speech. However, I am here to offer perhaps a different perspective and a different point of view. I think it's fair to say that everyone that's engaged in this fight and everyone that's here looking to support our children and our communities are in it for the right reasons, myself included. I have two children in the school system and we're all here fighting for them. But that also means supporting families as a whole, not just educational opportunities. I'm a farmer and a former registered nurse. I am not a stranger to hard work and I see the task that is laid out before all of you. And I would still rather be in a field full of weeds on a July day and try to solve some of the problems that lay before all of you, not only as a district, but public education as a whole. I want to see all of our kids thrive and have access to a great education and opportunities. This is something, again, I think we can all agree on. However, I don't, in the long-term view, I don't see how one override fixes the long-term problem. As a small business owner, I'm well aware of how expensive goods and services have become and will continue to be. The bigger picture is that even if the override had passed at some point, we would require another one and another one. This happened in Hamilton when they've seen override after override after override. And yes, we've all done a good job keeping it down, but it doesn't mean this is the only one. So I think about the new families that are here in town that are just starting their families. They're invested in the school system for twelve to fifteen years or more. So how expensive will it be to live here by then? So passing an override now solves the problem temporarily for our kids, and that's great. I want the best for my kids, Thomas and Mia too. But what's the long-term solution? Who will be privileged enough to live here years? When, from a different perspective, I moved here as a single parent. Had I been a homeowner and had an override pass. So we have six of the money that we think, that we think of. Comment was made that budgeting issues are a systemic problem, as many other school districts are grappling with the same issues. Several suggestions were made regarding reaching out to other school districts and even other legislative bodies. Those at the state or even federal level. So to gain some perspective on the bigger issues at hand and perhaps gather some ideas that we have not thought of yet, I was wondering if anyone on the board was able to follow up with those suggestions? And if so, what the outcome was? And if not, why? Because I'm sure other school committees may have some creative solutions here. There's a lot of potential creative ways to close this gap and solve this problem. And they're probably, and they may not just be solely based on budgets and financial issues. All options should be on the table. There are an unbelievable amount of talented people that live in this community. Perhaps we should start thinking less about what we have to share and give from a monetary standpoint and start thinking more about what we actually have to offer each other. I recently received an email asking if parents wanted to volunteer in some upcoming after-school programs. To my delight, there was a gardening club and I was thrilled to be able to talk about plants to younger kids. So perhaps someone out there can speak fluent French and wants to help volunteer for the club or offer private or small group lessons. Maybe there's a mechanic out there that wants to teach a basic automotive skills class to high school kids. Maybe a small group of willing parents gets together and starts a discussion on how to implement more community-supported after-school programs. In my opinion, anything is on the table. That would also give students a larger array of choices and a fraction of the cost. And, um, just some time and some organization can potentially give our students access to some great educational opportunities and expenses. And maybe that's a ridiculous idea. Maybe someone looks at me and says, well, Katie, that's nice, pie in the sky thinking, but what about this, this, and this? Well, we put everything on the table and we figure it out. That's the bottom line. So maybe the answer isn't an override. Maybe it's something else. You got to pull the arrow back to launch it forward. So think about that. This is our backwards moment. And perhaps something here is going to put her in a much better situation in the future that may not have anything to do with override. It's just thinking out of the box a little bit. So I'll leave you with that and thank you for your time.
How did the alarm not go off, John?
It's good. One second.
Okay. Are there any?
Are there people? To make. So I see. Okay, so. Motion to adjourn this way. Student making a comment or engaging. Full address, street number and street and town in the chat. So that we can get a sense of how many people are interested. So don't wait to do that because that's how we're going to make this determination. While that takes place, so who's left here? All right, we'll take your in person comment.
Can you hear me? So I'm Lindsay Bates, I'm at the Forty Fourth Street in Manchester. I want to say thank you to everyone who made it work to make it out to this meeting tonight. Thank you to the school committee for all your time and effort to do research, have tough conversations and problems solved for this budget in your committee meetings, subcommittee meetings and in our towns. And thank you to our town leaders as well. Thank you to district leaders for running our schools effectively and efficiently with such reasonable budget growth for the past decade. The more I do research and dig into the numbers, the more apparent how fortunate we have been to have such strong and effective leaders in this district. It is great to see that this year's budget falls no additional cuts given the path we've been on for the past few years. While I would like to see ads back such as elementary world language instruction, a middle high school library and Essex late bus. Given an Essex late bus that are given a tight budget communicated by the town. I think this level services budget is reasonable and necessary thing to do at this moment. I was relieved to see the instructional coaches included in this budget who can support teachers and their work with students, especially around reading and writing instruction that identified as a need in the latest assessments of both our elementary schools. I wanted to voice support for increasing the numbers of school choice students to generate revenue for the districts and hills eat classes that are already running. Thank you for finding that solution. I also wanted to voice support for addressing Essex Elementary School building needs. The third in a three phase plan to address aging buildings in the district. Essex voted in support of both the middle and high school and memorial at Manchester. Now, as a Manchester resident, I support getting Essex Elementary up to speed. Given that E E S will require our new E E S, Essex Elementary will require robust reserves for favorable borrowing terms, I would caution this committee against dipping into reserves to fund the budget this year and put us even back even further in the continuing budget shortfall. As we look to the future based on the reasonable growth in Manchester Essex Regional School District that is so low relative to surrounding towns as explained by Brian, it is unreasonable to keep budget growth at two point five percent. Growth limited to two point five percent would result in massive cuts. With all due respect, we cannot run a school district off of clubs and volunteer labor. However, we do have to comment this as partners. We must consider that the demographic differences between our towns are real. I think it's worth this committee's time to look at changing the apportionment formula as it will help ensure both towns control in the process. Our kids. And look at sweet programs. Finally, I'd like to see all public officials involved in solving for this budget.
They were signed out of being and signed back in and was.
We have people in saying the link are, but. Put their information in the chat, it appears. And I don't see anyone's name or address in the chat looking to make comment.
We get a verbal confirmation of somebody trying?
Someone, someone who's joined us online, can you, can you test the chat and unmute yourself and say, yes, this has worked? I know we have friends out there.
Well, I just did. I, I wrote just testing chat function. That's me.
That's Kate.
That's you.
That's Kate.
So we're going to call that. In that case, I see no interest in continuing.
It's not working.
But you're, but you're writing it in your chat again.
So just have them.
Yeah, if, okay, if there's someone who would like, could we put it on participant, the, the grid view so we can see what's doing?
Somebody named Mark W. wrote Tess.
Oh, I know that guy. He just don't worry about that.
It hurts, he says.
All right, the chat.
I'm sure it is working. It will not operate.
So it's hard to hear. Okay, that I can understand. But the chat function is working. The instruction we gave is if anyone online would like to make a comment, put your name and address in the chat. I don't currently see anything. Thanks, Mark. We love you. So we're, we're going to. I'm, I'm going to go with this is the best we've got. This is why they use the technology, they said. There's not much more I can do with this. Okay, so we did try, you are all witnesses to this, that we tried. So with that, we will close our public hearing for the night. Thank you all for joining us. It's. I've already just said. So thank you all for being here. We do have our vote motion for the actual meeting, for the actual budget on February sixth. So if you're interested in sending your input, you didn't think on that, please do. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, there's a second and a second's all in favor. We are adjourned at eight thirty two.